Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of the Lordy and Moore's Pradium ante calarum. The acronym is ANPAC and the chief judge of constable court. Today is Class 157, Class 157. What did we learn in Class 156? Well, if you don't mind me saying so, one of the things we learned is it's been about six weeks since ANPAC released a video, right? Last time we released a video was November the 9th. So it's been about six weeks, so I think it's appropriate to let the Moores know that I've been a little under the weather. I had the walking pneumonia and which gave me like this, you know, annoying cough. You know, I was just annoyed and upset and just coughing all the time and then I lost my voice. So I just thought I'd let the Moores know that's the reason why it's taken so long to come out with a video. I thank you for your patience, because I know the Moores are waiting for the video to come out ASAP. But, uh, you know, we're back now, so we'll continue on from here, right? Alright, so let's just go ahead and jump on into class, right? But I thank you for your patience to all the Moores, alright? So, as we know, in Class 157, who was going over was commonly known as intertemporal international law, right? Intertemporal international law, Class 156, right? Class 156, so we start talking about decolonization and how the Moores need to enforce their rights through international law, right? How the Moores need to do what? Accelerate decolonization by enforcing what? Resolution 1514 of December 14th of 1960, right? So we'll talk some more today. We'll actually read over Resolution 1514, right? We'll go over its preamble and its seven articles, right? It's a relatively short United Nations resolution, but it has about at least 13 paragraphs just in the preamble itself. And the preamble is very powerful. Most people don't take the time to read the preamble, but always remember, when you read treaties, you start with the first page of the contract, which is the preamble. So we'll go over that today, right? As a continuation from Class 156. So with that being said, let's go ahead and get into the class. Got a lot of information to go over. So, as the Moores know, I always open up the Constitution. The Constitution is paramount. What do I have up on the screen? Well, this is the Constitution of the Lordy and Moore's Pradium ante calarum, right? Uh, this is an internal constitution of the Moore's government for ANPAC. The acronym is ANPAC, right? But this constitution right here, it is 106 articles. It's an attachment to or a political tie to what? It's a political tie to the Constitution for the Empire of Morocco. This is the external constitution. It's the mother constitution. It's the national constitution. And all other Moore's constitutions come underneath the Empire Morocco's constitution. Therefore, ANPAC as an example is an attachment to, is a political tie to the Constitution for the Empire of Morocco, right? And that's what all the Moores have to understand. Each of the territory, whether it's Alabama, California, whether you're in Canada, whether you're in Germany, whether you're in France, whether you're anywhere within the Empire of Morocco, wherever that internal state is or province, you will take over that territory with a constitution and have what's commonly known as a shared jurisdiction. A shared jurisdiction. Therefore, you're talking about two jurisdictions. You have a jurisdiction for Moroccans and you have jurisdiction for the other foreigners, which would be Germans, French people, British people, Canadians, Americans, et cetera. You're going to share jurisdiction. Moroccans have a jurisdiction. An example, Americans have jurisdiction, but it's shared. We will continue to cohabitate under two separate jurisdictions, under two separate rules of law. We'll talk about that more in the future, alright? So, today, what I'd like to do, like I told you in Class 156, we talked about Resolution 1514 of 1960 quite often, but we didn't get a chance to read, right? Today, we will read it. It's very powerful, alright? But, listen to me. There's no use in us reading Resolution 1514 until we understand how did Resolution 1514 derive its powers? Who granted Resolution 1514 the right to recognize indigenous peoples' rights to decolonize? So we have to build up to that point. We don't want to start off with the resolution. Let's go backwards and find out that this resolution is tied to what? International law, but international law is recognized by what? The Charter of the United Nations. The Charter of the United Nations is like the HR department. The Charter of the United Nations and its member states operate like referees on planet Earth to make sure all other states are abiding by the rule of law. What law? International law, constitutional law, et cetera. So let's go backwards first to find out how do we enforce Resolution 1514, right? We got to find out how do we enforce it, but we got to go back to the origin of where it came from, alright? So what do I have up on the screen? I have the Charter of the United Nations, okay? We're going to read over Article 1, Section 2, and then we'll go to Article 73, alright? 74, right? Because international law works off this master contract. The master contract of international law is the Charter of the United Nations. And all of its resolutions are addendums to the Charter of the United Nations, alright? So one comes before the other. There is no Resolution 1514 without the Charter of the United Nations, alright? Okay. Alright, with that being said, let's go down to Article 1. What is Article 1 all about? Article 1, Section 2, okay? So the purpose, purposes and principles, right? Article 1, Section 2, the Moores need to understand this, alright? So, let's just start off with Article 1 and then we're going to Section 2, alright? From the top, Brother Dre?
Chapter 1, Purposes and Principles, Article 1. The purposes of the United Nations are: One, to maintain international peace and security, and to that end, to take effective collective measures for the prevention and removal of threats to the peace and for the suppression of acts of aggression or other breaches of the peace, and to bring about by peaceful means and in conformity with the principles of justice and international law, adjustment or settlement of international disputes or situations which might lead to a breach of the peace.
Okay. Article 2.
Article 2, to develop friendly relations among nations based on respect for the principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples, and to take other appropriate measures to strengthen universal peace.
Alright, pause right there. So the Charter of the United Nations, Article 1, Section 2. It says, "To develop friendly relations among nations based upon respect for principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples, and to take other appropriate measures to strengthen universal peace." So, Article 1, Section 2, it immediately says it's about self-determination of peoples. But do you see the sequential order they said first? The first thing they talked about was what? Said to develop friendly relations among who? Nations, or what are nations? Nation-states, i.e. the country. So it says, "To develop friendly relations among nations," that's first, "based upon respect for the principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples," right? So the state first, then the people. But the people establish the state. But you have to see how the Charter is written in sequential order. If the people or state list, they have no rights. So if you want self-determination, what is it that you're determining? You're determining what? The establishment of a state. The state is sovereign. The people, the people vest, vest the sovereignty into the state. You say, "Well, that says nation, that didn't say state." Okay, well, let's back up. What does it say off the top? What's the name of the document? Just a second. It says what? Charter of what? United Nations. Did that say Charter of the United States? No, it says Charter of the United Nations, but nations mean what? States. Who are the members to the Charter? States. The reason why they didn't want to necessarily put the word "state" right there, because then it would look a little interesting when you say the Charter of the United States. And the whole world were like, "Man, United States running everything." So they had to switch it up. The Charter of the United Nations, because the word "nations" is a generic word. But what's not generic word? If it would've said Charter of the United States, they'd say, "Wait a minute, man. United States of Americas, they're running a candy." So they use the word "nation," but the word "nation" interpretation is what? State. Okay, let's go back down to Article 1, Section 2. Moores got to use forensics. You got to be a wordsmith. Moores must become wordsmiths. So we see Article 1, Section 2, "to develop friendly relations among who?" States. You see how easy that is? So you need a state for who? The people. That's important, that's in the Charter. So if the people want to establish a state, because now they want to what? They want to self-determination. What are they determining? That they want to do what? Decolonize, right? They want to self-govern. That's what they're determining. They want to self-govern, therefore they need a state. That way they can set up three branches of state government. Alright, so now, you come down to what? Article 73, it gets into specific fundamental, fundamental language. For who? Colonized people. Okay, so now we go down to Article 73. Article 73 falls under Chapter 11. You'll hear the International Court of Justice talk about Chapter 11 all the time, okay? Brother Dre, from the top.
Chapter 11, Declaration Regarding Non-Sub-Governing Territories. Article 73. Members of the United Nations which have or assume responsibilities for the administration of territories whose peoples have not yet attained a full measure of self-government, recognize the principle that the interests of the inhabitants of these territories are paramount and accept as a sacred trust the obligation to promote to the utmost within the system of international peace and security established by the present Charter, the well-being of the inhabitants of these territories, and to this end. A, to ensure with due respect for the culture of the peoples concerned, their political, economic, social and educational advancement, their just treatment and their protection against abuses. B, to develop self-government, to take due account of the political aspirations of the peoples and to assist them in the progressive development of their free political institutions according to the particular circumstances of each territory and its peoples in their varying stages of advancement.
Alright, let's pause right there. So what do you see happening here? Okay, first of all, because keep in mind, we're going to read over Resolution 1514, which is about what? The Declaration on the Granting of Independence for Countries and Peoples. That's the name of the document, that's the name of the contract, right? But Resolution 1514 gets its power and authority from what? The Charter of the United Nations. So you got to go back to the master contract to determine how is Resolution 1514 has its powers, alright? So you go to Article 73 of the Charter of the United Nations and it tells you immediately, "Members of the United Nations," who are the members? The United what? States on the planet Earth. All the states are members. They call them nations. Which has assumed responsibility for the administration of territories. What does administration of territories mean? That means it's a colonial state that's maintaining the administration. What's administration? A government. Therefore, the colonial state is maintaining its government, meaning it's maintaining its laws and its courts. It's maintaining regulations over a territory that it has colonized, alright? So from the top. Members of the United Nations which have or assume responsibilities for the administration of colonized territories whose indigenous people have not attained a full measurement of self-government, recognize the principle that the interests of the indigenous inhabitants of these territories are paramount. What does paramount mean first? So the colonists have to put the needs of the indigenous people first according to what? Law, but what law? International law of the Charter of the United Nations. Continuing to read. And accept as a sacred trust the obligation, key word, obligation, to promote to the utmost within the system of international peace. So, the colonists have to operate within the sphere of international law. When they say international peace, that's international law. So, decolonization, what do you invoke for yourself as a people? Well, first you need a state, then the colonists have to assist you. So the indigenous people and the colonists are working within what law together? They're working within international law. International law acts as what? The referee for both parties, alright? Listen. So you're working within the system of international peace and security established by the present Charter. So what establishes the rules of law? What establishes the procedure? The Charter of the United, of the United Nations, which enforces what? International law. For who? Indigenous people in all states. Listen. The well-being of the inhabitants of these territories and to this end, what is the member state? United States of America, as an example, is a member state. What are their obligations? United States of Americas to do what? To ensure with due respect for the culture of the peoples concerned, their political. See that word "political"? See it's the first word? What does political mean? Political means what? The state and the government. If anytime we see the word "political," that's tied back to the word what? State. It's a political tie to the state. And this is what Moores never understood. You must establish a political status. That's the first word. Listen to me. From the top. "To ensure for United States of America," if you're trying to decolonize, "United States of America says such and a," "to ensure with due respect for the culture of the peoples concerned, their political." So United States of America never had to respect Moores, because Moores were not seeking political status, because political status means the Moores have to establish what first? The state. So United States of America never had to respect Moores, because the Moores didn't follow the instructions of the first word. And United States of America always knew that. And there's several states. Let me continue to read. Listen. "To ensure with due respect," so the United States of America is supposed to respect what? The Moore's political status, but the Moores have to create a state. So if the Moores wasn't creating a state, United States of America never had to respect you. This is law we're reading. The master contract of international law set up the rules of engagement. Listen. "To ensure with due respect for the culture of the peoples concerned, their, one, political, two, economic, three, social, four, educational advancement, right? And five, their just treatment, and six, and their protection against abuses." So United States of America never had to respect Moores, because Moores had delayed their own justice, because Moores don't know nothing about their political tie to a state. But what's the proper name of the state? The Empire of Morocco. That's the name in the treaties. All of the treaties. When Moores say, "I'm Moore's treaty." Okay, what's the name of the Moore's treaty? Empire of Morocco. Moores have never pledged their allegiance back to the Empire of Morocco, therefore United States of America never had to show you no respect. You see how easy this is so far? This is why Rahm Emanuel, Mayor of Chicago, Illinois, back in 2012, tried to tell the Moores, "All your rights are guaranteed in the Charter if you actually read it and then understand the observation and application of the law." You see what's happening? Now you see this word "political"? Okay, now watch this. Now we go to Section B. Watch me say the word "political" again. They're giving Moore's hints. So United States of America, along with the Moores, says, "B, to develop self-government, to take due account of the political aspirations." There's a word "political" again. "The political aspirations of the peoples, and to assist them in the progressive development of their free political institutions." There it is again. What's a political institution? Three branches, government of what? The state. According to the particular circumstances of each territory and its peoples and their varying stages of advancement. Who's at varying stages of advancement? The indigenous people. But what's the first step they had to do? Establish a state. What about the state? They had to establish what? What did they have to establish? A constitution. So first, there's a declaration of independence. You must declare that you want to be independent away from who? The colonists. That's the first step. What's the second step? Constitution for the Empire of Morocco. You see? Now I'm going to remind you of the 13 colonies. What the 13 colonies do back in 1776? They declared their independence. That was first. What's the second thing they did? Then they drafted a constitution that they put into full force of effect in 1781. It took the 13 colonies four or five years to finally have a constitution, but they had already declared their independence. Then, they drafted a constitution. So the Empire of Morocco declared its independence on what date? June 3rd, 2024. On the same day that Sultan of Morocco, Abdul Al Khabir, also signed the constitution on June 3rd, 2024. So on the same day of the Declaration of Independence, the same day the constitution was signed. This is what people who have to declare according to the contract. What contract? The master contract. Let's go to the master contract. What's the master contract? Charter of the United Nations. And Charter of the United Nations under Chapter 11, which is about indigenous people trying to self-govern. It says, "Chapter 11, Declaration Regarding Non-Sub-Governing Territories." So the indigenous people also have to do what? Declare, right? Because who was doing the declaration in this article? The member state. The member state was declaring that they're going to do what? Enforce this master contract and adhere to it under observation and application of the language. And then the indigenous people have to do the same thing. Enforce this contract and declare what? Declare what? Independence and establish a constitution. Those are the first two steps. What type of constitution? State constitution. Not a corporation constitution, not a charter constitution, but a state constitution. So it's all about political, right? Okay, listen. The steps what? The state. So now we go onto another treaty. Treaty of Montevideo Convention on Rights and Duties of States. So, the Montevideo Convention is about rights. Rights of who? States. They said rights of people? They said rights of states. Listen. Article 1, which is all about. Moores have to learn where do you derive your power from? As a Moore, you derive it through the state. And Moore want to decolonize, they have to follow the instructions. Judge DeCastro told you, "In order to accelerate decolonization, you must use Resolution 1514 of 1960, but Resolution 1514 of 1960 is an attachment to the master contract called the Charter of the United Nations." How can you enforce Resolution 1514? You haven't even read the master contract. And the master contract tells you what you need first? A dang-on state! Listen. Article 1, Brother Dre?
Article 1. The state as a person of international law should possess the following qualifications. A, permanent population. B, a defined territory. C, government. And D, capacity to enter into relations with the other states.
That's right. So wait a minute. So that's, that's Section what? A, Section B, Section C, Section D. So that's 1, 2, 3, 4 subsections, right? But do you see the fifth? What's the fifth? It says sequential order. What did you need first in order even be able to enforce subsections A, B, C, and D? First you need what? A state. You see? It's about the rights and duties of states. It's the state as a person in international law. So what do you need first? A state. These are basic rules of law. So first you need a state, and the state is protected under international law. Then you can get into subsection A. Subsection A says what? You need a permanent population. Permanent population. But the population means nothing without what? The state. So the population comes together to establish a state. Then after that, you need what? A defined territory for the state. And the state also has what? A government. But then that state, once it's established by the people, it must have the capacity, Section D, capacity to enter into relations with all the states. So what type of relations is it on planet Earth? State-on-state relations. Listen to me. So if the relation is state-on-state and states are persons, then let me ask a high, high level question to all the Moores. How many persons on planet Earth? The answer is, according to the Charter of the United Nations, member states, there's only 193 persons on planet Earth. If states are persons, there's only 193 persons on planet Earth. If in fact, you're only going by member states. Now obviously, there's other states such as who? Palestine. Palestine is a state. Palestine has a constitution. Palestine was recognized by the other member states of the United Nations. But are they a member state? No. Out of 193 member states, because there's only 193 persons on planet Earth, because states are persons. So if you're only looking at it under the subject matter as a vertical, how many persons are on planet Earth under the subject matter of states? It's only 193 member states. It should be 194. Why? Because 75% of the member states of the United Nations recognize Palestine as a state. 75%. Do you know what it takes to pass a bill through a house? Only two-thirds majority. Two-thirds. You know what two-thirds is? 66%. So if 75% of the member states of the United Nations recognize Palestine as state, then why isn't Palestine being recognized as a member state? When it's an overwhelming majority recognize Palestine as a state? Who else should be a state? The Western Sahara. The Western Sahara should be a member state. Technically, there should be a hundred and ninety-five member states right now as of December twenty twenty-four. Hundred and ninety-five. But Palestine's being blocked by who? The United States. The Western Sahara being blocked by who? The United States and who? Kingdom of Morocco. Belligerent states. So at some point, the Empire Morocco as a state, listen to me. The Empire Morocco as a state will one day become a member state as well. In what capacity? I don't know. We're still trying to figure that part out. But we will figure it out. What capacity, what scope would Empire Morocco play at the United Nations as a member state? Because the Empire Morocco isn't necessarily equivalent with all states. The Empire Morocco, within its jurisdiction, has several European states. The Empire Morocco is not equivalent with the other European states because the European states are what? In Morocco. So we'll talk about this in the future. So once the Empire Morocco becomes a member state in whatever capacity it plays, at that point, by then, it should be a hundred and ninety-six member states. Palestine, Western Sahara, and Empire Morocco. Because I'm telling you right now, more than likely, when the Sultan of Morocco recognizes the Western Sahara people's rights to independence, all hell's gonna break loose. But when the Sultan speaks, that's a command. Who's the Sultan of Morocco? Okay, I'll show you. Vote it in. The Sultan is Abdul Smith Al Khabir. Sultan of the Empire Morocco. There's the Empire Morocco flag. Now, Abdul Smith Al Khabir has been elected Sultan by the people on May twelfth, twenty twenty-four. What people? Moroccans. Can Americans vote for a Sultan? No. Can Canadians vote for the Sultan? No. Why not? Because the Sultan's Moroccan. Only Moroccans can vote for a Moroccan Sultan. You got Moors running around talking about they're Americans. Then guess what, Mr. Moorish American? You can't vote for a Moroccan Sultan. That's the truth. The Moors have delayed their own justice. Let's continue because it's gonna be a very interesting class tonight. I'm just building up. I'm building up. So now that we took a look at the Charter of the United Nations and see it's about your political tie to the state, the people must be tied to a state. And the state must come first, then the people, because the people vest the sovereignty to the state constitution. And the state constitution recognizes the people's nationality. The state becomes the mother. She recognizes her children. Because the children recognize her too. But how many persons are on planet Earth? A hundred and ninety-three member states. Are there other states that are non-member states? Absolutely. So under the subject matter of state, the Moors have to establish state first on behalf of the people. And the people vest the power to the state constitution. And then the constitution becomes what? Listen. The constitution becomes the master contract on behalf of all the people. And all other laws are an addendum to the master contract. So if you pass laws through your state, all those subsequent laws you pass are nothing but an attachment to, they're an addendum to the master contract, which is the constitution. This, this is what the Moors need to ask us of. This constitution right here has one hundred and six articles. We'll go over at least one or two articles today. All right, so be patient with me. I'm building up. We're gonna go over Resolution fifteen fourteen. All right? We're gonna go over Resolution fifteen fourteen. It's a powerful resolution regarding decolonization. Moors will use this over and over and over again for years to come. For the next one hundred, if not more, years to come, we will continue to use this pick and roll over and over again. But because the colonists can't stop it. This resolution, this contract, this treaty is undefeated. It's undefeated like Mayweather. Undefeated. You know how many territories are already decolonized by using this treaty? Eighty-four-plus territories. Eighty-four-plus. It's undefeated. It's never been defeated as a law. This legal argument, utilizing this law, it's never been defeated. I'm being redundant for a reason. This is what Moors need to understand. But how are you ever gonna enforce it? You never read the Charter. Because if you read the Charter, you understood it. It's about your political tie to your state. Without a state, you can't enforce any UN resolutions, including the rights of indigenous people. Who's the only person can enforce the rights of indigenous people? Only the state. Only the state can enforce the rights of indigenous people. Why is that? Because the rights of indigenous people is a treaty. Who is the only person that can be a party to a treaty? Only the state. So Moors keep running around talking about, "Yeah, I'm enforcing the rights of indigenous people." No, you're not. Because your state wasn't a party to it because you said you was a Moorish American. You said you're the black man. You said you're a spiritual soul Cherokee being. Stateless. How are you gonna enforce treaties where you have no state? Only your state can enforce it. We're gonna learn about that today. We're gonna go deeper. I'm building up. That's what I'm doing right now. So we're gonna come back. And we're gonna read this. But first, we gotta build up. Okay, we gotta build up. Okay, listen, Moors. All right. One thing we quickly have to understand when you start talking about treaties. Because the United Nations Charter is all about the enforcement of what? Treaties. But you must understand there are different facets when it comes to what's commonly known as the rule of law. I think it's fair to say that most people know that international law is law. But there are different facets of law that Moors need to know about in order to be able to enforce Resolution fifteen fourteen. We're building up. First, let's take it to the board. Before we start reading, what was commonly known as self-executing and non-self-executing treaties. We're gonna learn about that today. It's about, we're gonna learn a little bit more about how the Moors are in a status of self-executing treaties or non-self-executing treaties. Who has a right to enforce the language of a treaty? Because Moors have been running around for decades talking about, "Yeah, man, I'm enforcing the Treaty of Peace and Friendship." Really? Are you sure about that? That's your legal argument? Based upon what? Based upon who? Who authorized you to use the treaty? What state told you you could use the treaty? That's my question to Moors. Because who's a party to the treaty? States. So tell me the name of the state that gave you as a Moor a right to enforce any provisions, any articles of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship? That's my question. And you know what the answer is? None. But you'll tell Mr. Whitey he's a criminal, but you don't know what the hell you're talking about. Listen. We're gonna go deeper today. Let's take it to the board. Okay, Moors. All right, be patient with me, okay? Because I'm building up. So you gotta be patient, patient. We're gonna, building blocks. We're getting there. All right, what do we have up here? The rule of law. That's the title. Question mark. Everything's about the rule of law. But the question is, which law? Whose law is whose law rules? If everything's about the rule of law, the next question is, whose law rules? Moors have to understand there's five, at the very least, five facets of law. Five. Okay, what's the first facet of law? The first facet is what? International law. That's a form of law. Then there's what? Treaty law. That's a form of law. Then there's what you call fundamental law, which is the enforcement of constitutions. Your constitution is listed under fundamental law. Then there's statutory law. And then there's common law. So there's common law, statutory law, fundamental law, treaty law, and international law. That's five different facets of law. So when you ask the question, if the rule, if the rule is the rule of law, that's what everything's about, the rule of law, the question, okay, well, which law are you talking about? Which law rules? So the next question, okay, well, what's the subject matter? Depending on the subject matter, is which law you invoke? Moors keep saying, "I'm enforcing the constitution." Okay, that falls under what? Fundamental law. Moors say, "I'm enforcing the Treaty of Peace and Friendship." Okay, that falls under what? Treaty law. Then the Moors say, "Yeah, man, go to, you know, the United States statutes." Okay, that falls under what? Statutory law. Then they say, "Yeah, man, the Supreme Court ruled on the right to travel." Okay, right to travel from the Supreme Court fell under what? Common law. Let's break the board down. The rule of law, that's the question. Which law rules? Okay, there's a such thing called intertemporal international law, which is just basically international law. Then you got the law of treaties. But when it comes to treaties, treaties are, listen, it's being called self-executing treaties or non-self-executing treaties. We'll learn about that because that's what I got on the screen. Self-executing and non-self-executing treaties. We're gonna learn more about that. Because Moors have to understand this. When you start to enforce law, you have to understand, okay, if you're talking about the rule of law, you're talking about which law rules, then you gotta understand which facet are you enforcing? This is why the word intertemporal is up there. What does intertemporal mean? It means time and placement. Whatever law you're using, that law may be a newly created law or that law might go back two thousand years. Take for instance, the United States Constitution of the United States of America, that is, was established in what year? It went into full force of effect seventeen eighty-eight, but they didn't deposit what the Sultan of Morocco into seventeen eighty-nine, when they actually opened up their government. So the United States of America's Constitution of seventeen eighty-nine been in full force of effect for decades. However, then in eighteen seventy-one, more specifically, February twenty-first, eighteen seventy-one, the United States of America decided to change their constitution into what's commonly known now as the United States Constitution. It's not the United States of America. It's just United States, two words, instead of four. But the United States federal constitution of their intragovernmental organization, i.e. federal corporation, has been enforced since what? Eighteen seventy-one. So that's a long time in intertemporal law. A lot law. Fundamental law of a constitution. So some laws only been in existence for a day or two, some been in existence for hundreds of years. So when you're talking about the rule of law, you gotta break it down. So what, what law are you talking about? Like, the what subject matter? What's the subject matter? Okay, you're talking about international law? You're talking about treaty law? You're talking about fundamental laws of the constitution? Or you're talking about statutory law? You're talking about common law? Five different facets of law. Moors don't know nothing about this. But we're gonna learn today. Listen. All right. Fundamental law, let's break it down before we get into the reading. Okay? Under fundamental law, the state constitution, everybody's constitution on planet Earth is listed under fundamental law. What does fundamental law mean? Is that anyone can do what? You can invoke the language of a constitution. You can invoke it. If you're a citizen or national of that state, you can invoke that constitution under fundamental law. It's primary. Constitutions are what? Paramount. Constitution is the master contract for your state. It's the master. Everything after that is the addendum to the master contract. It's additional language. That's what an addendum means. It just has continuing language to support the master contract. So under fundamental law, the state constitution also has what's called a supremacy clause in people's constitutions. But the supremacy clause talks about what? Treaty language. The supreme law of the constitution is treaty language. Right? So it says treaty language is a supreme law of the land under supremacy clause. Therefore, treaty, uh, uh, the language in a constitution is fundamental law. It means anyone can invoke it. Down here, that's the word permissible. What does permissible mean? Anyone is permitted to enforce the language of a constitution. All citizens and nationals can enforce that language. They don't need permission to enforce the language of a constitution. Anyone can enforce it. It's permissible. Listen. So now you go from the master contract, which is constitution, under fundamental law, now you go over to statutory law. What is statutory law? That's when the House members come together. As an example, the United States, under the, called a Congress, has what? House of Representatives and the Senate. Both of those houses, when you put them together, it's called Congress. Under one word, Congress. That means both houses on a joint assembly come together. And then that bills. And when they pass those bills, it turns into what? Legislative acts. That's listed under statutory law. So anytime Congress, as an example, the United States Congress, passes a bill into law, it's legislative act that's listed under what? Statutory law. And statutory law is an addendum to the master contract, which is the constitution. Right? It's additional language that extends the language of a constitution.[1731.48] It's extended language. Okay? As an example. So statutory law is legislative act about the Congress. United States is an example. For example, the Affordable Care Act of the year twenty-ten, commonly known as Obamacare. It was passed by who? Congress. The House and the Senate got together, passed the bill. They gave it to President Barack H. Obama. He signed it into law. Now it has the full weight of the state to be statutory law. It became an addendum to the constitution. However, let's look at this as an example. Check this out. The Treaty of Peace and Friendship falls under statutory law. Wait, timeout. But I thought the Treaty of Peace and Friendship was a treaty. Well, it is a treaty. But the only way the treaty becomes binding law on a state, guess who has to ratify it and pass it through the House? It has to be the House members of the Congress, using the United States as an example. So the Senate and the House of Representatives get together and they pass a bill and they recognize the treaty language and say, we're gonna adopt this language of the treaty and now make it binding legislation on the United States of America. Now it's listed under statutory law, because now it's the internal law of state. See, when you first bring up a treaty, it's not internal law yet. In order for a treaty to become internal law, domestic law of a state, it has to be ratified through the House members, signed into law by the president. Then it immediately becomes statutory law, because statutory law is the internal law of the state. It's domestic law. Follow me. However, even though treaties are listed under statutory law, the United States has this thing called, well, if statutory law is permissible, meaning that any national or citizen can enforce statutory law, right? Because you can say, you go to court and force a state or someone to write, to perform based upon the law. You can invoke law. Anyone can invoke law as a legal defense. Under statutory law, any citizen or national has permission to invoke that law as a legal defense. But since treaty is listed under statutory law, they turn around and say, yeah, but are we really gonna let citizens and nationals invoke treaty language? So they list treaties under what's called what? Non-self-executing treaty. Meaning even though the treaty is statutory law, that's permissible for anyone to invoke. But they turn around and list a treaty after it was ratified, they put on a status called non-self-executing treaty. Meaning no one can invoke the language of the treaty without the permission of the state. Therefore, the language of a treaty becomes what's commonly known as moot. M-O-O-T. Moot. What does moot mean? It means that that language basically set aside. Moot does not mean null or void. It means it's irrelevant. You can't invoke it, because it's non-self-executing. You can't have permission to invoke the language of a treaty, because they listed under non-self-executing. What is self-executing? Well, all the fundamental laws of the constitution, you can invoke the seven articles of the United States. You can invoke the twenty-seven amendments of the United States. That's permissible. That's self-executing. You can invoke statutory law of the Affordable Care Act. You can use that law. But as soon as you start to try to invoke the language of a treaty, the United States says, well, hold up, timeout. We're gonna list that under non-self-executing. It's gonna be moot. You can't do it. Why not? Because the treaty is between who? Two states. So the state on state relations put together the treaty. So they say, well, who needs to enforce the treaty? The state and its government officials. So they don't let the average national or citizen invoke the language of a treaty, because the treaty has to be invoked by the competent authority, i.e. their attorney general, the consul general, the secretary of state, the minister of foreign affairs, the president, the Sultan, whoever's head of state, head of government, senior officials, they can invoke the language of a treaty, because they're the representative of what? The state. Are the regular citizens and nationals? Officers of the state? No. Listen to me, I'm building up. So the Moors been running around trying to enforce the Treaty of Peace and Friendship for decades, not understanding that the Treaty of Peace and Friendship is a non-self-executing treaty, because the United States never gave permission for Moors to be able to invoke it. Well, you say, well, how do the United States have permission to tell me whether I can invoke it or not? Oh, there lies the problem. Moors are still naturalized under the jurisdiction in the United States of America, which means you're still a naturalized American. You ain't a foreign national. Only foreign nationals can invoke treaty language. Moors Americans are still citizens of the United States. Therefore, you're just American. So it's American on American dispute. You can't invoke a treaty, because treaty is only for a foreign state versus another foreign state. And right now, you, you, you think, if this is the United States of America, you say you over here, you're a non-US citizen. That's a lie. You say you're a non-US citizen? I got no problem with that. Prove it. Tell me the name of your state that recognized you and your nationality. It doesn't exist. So treaties are up here on a level of state-on-state relations. Citizens and nationals are down here. They can't enforce treaty language. Only states can enforce treaty language amongst themselves. Now the state can turn around and give its nationals permission to invoke the language of a treaty, but the state gonna say, well, let's say it's, uh, twenty-five articles. The state says, well, we're only gonna let you invoke one of those articles out of the entire treaty, because that one article might have something to do with human rights. But the other articles to that treaty might have something to do with state-on-state relations. Well, you ain't got nothing to do with state-on-state relations. You only worried about that one article that gave you some form of a human right. So the state will say, well, we'll let you self-execute that one article within that entire treaty. But the United States says, all treaties are non-self-executing unless the United States points out a particular article in said treaty. But what's the problem the Moors Americans are having? They think they can enforce a treaty, but they're still naturalized Americans. So it's an American on American dispute. But Moors Americans are stateless. They have no state. The United States of America's a state. Moors Americans are still where? Under here. Moors Americans, black people, Indians, Cherokees, African-Americans, Pan-Africans, whatever you call yourself, if this is the United States of America's a state, this is you underneath it. But you keep pretending like you over here, and this is why they call you sovereign citizen, because you're acting like you're a state by yourself. Then you got the audacity to say you enforcing treaties. And who's the only person that can enforce treaties? A state. So state on state relations, this is why I took you on the Treaty of Montevideo of nineteen thirty-three. Article one says, a state is a person in international law. So, what did the Moors need in order to enforce a treaty? Okay, here we go. Moors needed what? A constitution. A constitution for the empire Morocco. The constitution is a state. It is a person in international law. Therefore, the state, i.e. the constitution, allows you to become a secretary power or contracting party to treaties. Then, once you become a contracting party to treaties, then you can invoke the language of said treaty. But who can invoke the language of the treaty? Only the nationals of the constitution. But what about the nationals? They must be what? The competent authority of the state, meaning they're the government officials of the state. They're the ones who come to represent their treaty language, because the treaty is between two states. The treaty is not between two nationals down here. The treaty is up here with the language of state-on-state conversations. Okay, here's an example. Brittany Griner. Brittany Griner got caught up in Russia. Brittany Griner then started trying to invoke treaty language. Who got Brittany Griner out of jail? It was the United States of America. Negotiating with who? Russia. Two states were negotiating Brittany Griner's release. She wasn't negotiating her own. She wasn't down here trying to, trying to talk to Russia. It was Russia talking to who? Brittany Griner's state officials up here. So, okay, let's talk Moors Americans as an example. So if this is the United States of America and Moors Americans are down here and they have no state, they down here, because they say they're not a citizen of the United States, but there's no state, which means now they what? They're aliens. Because there's no state, no state recognizes these Moors Americans and these other sovereign citizens. So when Moors Americans get caught up, because they claim they're not citizens of the United States, the United States of America, you'd be citizen. But you say you're not a citizen, you over here, the western state. So then you start arguing with the United States up here and their lower state up here. You down here trying to argue with a lower state and you trying to argue with the United States of America as an individual. And you keep wondering why you can't enforce the treaty language. Because you've been miseducated. You don't understand statutory law. You don't understand fundamental law. You don't understand treaty law. And you certainly don't understand international law. And let's talk about common law, as I'm building up. What is common law? Common law is what you call judge-made law. Common law is the court's rulings. Anytime a court gives a judgment, a sentencing, it becomes what? Precedent. That's common law, when the judge makes the law. Any ruling that comes from the court is, is known as common law in the absence of a statutory law. When there's no statute and the judge is left to make a decision on his own, the judge gets to make the law, because his sentencing becomes judge-made law. And it becomes what's called precedent in steris scis or res judicata. And all common law, which is court rulings, is permissible. Anyone can invoke a case law. It's permissible. You don't need permission from the government to enforce case law. You don't need permission, because you already have permission to invoke statutory law. You already have permission to invoke fundamental law of the constitution. But what is it that states say you're not allowed to invoke? You're, you're not permitted to invoke treaties, because treaty is listed under non-self-executing law. You can't invoke that law. Who can invoke it? Only the state officials. Listen. Now that we've gone on with the basics, we'll come back to this. So how many, at the very least, how many facets of law are up there? Five. International law, treaty law, right? Fundamental law of the constitution, statutory law of statutes. And you got a common law, which is court rulings. Judge-made law. That's five laws. Under the rule of law, well which law rules? Okay, let's learn some more about this. Because in order to read Resolution fifteen fourteen, firstly, you have to understand how we're building up to be able to enforce this, because if this is such a powerful treaty, then how are we going to enforce it if we're stateless? How are you going to enforce it when you have no government? How are you going to enforce a treaty when you haven't ratified it through your government? First, your government of the state has to ratify it through the House members, the legislators. Then it has to be signed into law by the head of state. Then your state officials can enforce the treaty. Have the Moors Americans done any of what I just said? None of the above. They've done none of the above. I know people say, people are just so sensitive, man, why you keep talking about Moors American? Because I used to be one. And I understand the foolishness. I understand all the things I was miseducated. So I'm trying to warn all the Moors Americans that you're being miseducated. I'm trying to warn anybody calling themselves black and someone telling you you're Moors American, that's a damn lie. You're not Moors American. There's no such thing as a Moors American. You can't even find the word Moors American even in a dictionary. You can't find the word Moors American in any legislative act whatsoever coming from the federal government. You can't find the word Moors American in a treaty nowhere on planet Earth. Moors American movement is nothing but a commercial enterprise of deceit and heartbreak. You're gonna lose everything you got messing around calling yourself a Moors American. I love all the Moors, but we've been miseducated as people. We gotta study international law. You must study the five essentials of law. That's what the unpack study session is about. We gotta study. So we're building up to Resolution fifteen fourteen, where it's a treaty, and the only person can enforce a treaty is the state and its state officials. We're building up to that. But firstly, we gotta understand, why is it that Moors could have never enforced the Treaty of Peace and Friendship? This is what I'm building up to, to show you why you could not. Then I want to show you why that you can enforce it now. But who can enforce it? Only Moroccans and specifically the Moroccan officials of the state. The competent authority, the duly-appointed officials, the accredited officials who have full powers to invoke the language of the treaty. Listen. All right. Let's do some reading. Okay, what do I have here? I have, uh, from the Law Institute, right? The reference book. A little bit of reference book. Legal information, okay? So in this one, they're talking about Article two, section, uh, Article two, section two, clause two. Talking about self-executing and non-self-executing of what? Treaties. So what's the subject matter? Treaties. So under the rule of law, which facet are we talking about right now in the subject matter? Treaties. But treaties come under the governance of what? International law. So as soon as you start talking about treaty law, you're immediately talking about what? International law. But there is no treaty unless the constitution, which is master agreement, and the officials of the state pass it through the House and it became ratified statutory law, that now is in the status of being non-self-executing, because it's listed under the treaty. Gotta follow me. Talking treaties. This is the Moors gotta study, Moors gotta study. Okay, let's just jump on down and get, get to the near degree. Okay. As an example, let's learn what the United States says about treaty enforcement. Because this is what the Moors Americans don't understand, but Moroccans do. Moroccans, shout-outs to Moroccan nationals. All right, let's go, run the grain from the top.
The supremacy clause of the Constitution, Article six, Clause two, states that treaties concluded in accordance with constitutional requirements have the status of the supreme law of the land. The founders included treaties in the supremacy clause in direct response to one of the major weaknesses of the Articles of Confederation. The national government's inability to enforce the United States treaty obligations. Although the Articles of Confederation gave exclusive treaty-making power to Congress, the United States depended on state legislators to enact laws necessary to ensure compliance with the nation's treaty commitments. When states ignored or violated the United States obligations, most famously by refusing to permit British citizens to collect pre-revolutionary war debt, uh, pre-revolutionary war debts, some foreign nations considered the United States an unreliable treaty partner or cited U.S. non-compliance as grounds to disregard their own treaty commitments. The framers sought to remedy this problem by making treaties part of the supreme law of the land, to which the judges in every state shall be bound. The supremacy clause marked a shift from the British system, under which treaties generally have domestic effect only after being implemented by parliament.
So treaties only have an effect, listen. The supremacy clause marked a shift from the British system, under which treaties generally have domestic Marked a shift from the British system under which treaties generally have domestic effect only. After being implemented by Parliament. So a treaty only has use of force once the legislators pass it through the House. And then the head of state signs it into law, now it gives the full weight of the state. Okay, listen, continue.
Despite the supremacy clause's seeming simplicity, not all treaties have the status of domestic law that is enforceable in US courts. Some treaties or provisions within treaties are self-executing, meaning domestic courts can enforce them directly. Other treaty provisions.
Pause, read that again.
Despite the supremacy clause's seeming simplicity, not all treaties have the status of domestic law that is enforceable in US courts. Some treaties or provisions with treaties.
Provisions.
Well, excuse me, provisions within treaties are self-executing, meaning domestic courts can enforce them directly.
Pause, so. Right here is already telling you a little bit of secret. It says some. Some treaties, listen. Or some provisions within treaties. See, the United States is picking and choosing which article within the treaty. Allows the people permission to enforce that particular article within the treaty. Now, we're talking United States. In a little while, we're gonna talk about the empire Morocco, right, how the empire Morocco enforces treaties. We're gonna talk about the empire Morocco, how it gives permission to its nationals to invoke treaty language. We're gonna talk about that as well, we're gonna talk about two constitutions, empire Morocco, United States of America. But I'm starting with United States of America, why? Because that's the one people are most familiar with the laws and procedures of the United States of America. That's why I'm starting with that as an example, all right? So, so bear with me. Let's read it again, right here it says, some treaties. Or some provisions within treaties. So you're picking and choosing articles. Based upon which articles are they allowing citizens permission to invoke? Only articles that really have something to do with human rights. Okay? Listen, from the top, despite.
Despite the supremacy clause's seeming simplicity, not all treaties have the status of domestic law that is enforceable in US courts. Some treaties or provisions within treaties are self-executing, meaning domestic courts can enforce them directly. Other treaty provisions are non-self-executing and occupy a more complex status in the US legal system. Non-self-executing treaty provisions are not directly enforceable in US courts. And Congress generally must pass legislation implementing the provision in a domestic statute to make it judicially enforceable.
Continue.
The Supreme Court first recognized the self-execution. Doctrine in an eighteen twenty-nine decision Foster versus Nielsen. In his opinion for the court, Chief Justice John Marshall explained. Our Constitution declares a treaty to be the law of the land. It is consequently to be regarded in courts of justice as equivalent to an act of a legislator.
Pause, read that again.
The Supreme Court first recognized the self-execution. Doctrine in an eighteen twenty-nine decision Foster versus Nielsen. In his opinion for the court, Chief Justice John Marshall explained. Our Constitution declares a treaty to be the law of the land. It is consequently to be regarded in courts of justice as equivalent to an act of the legislator.
Pause, okay. So this particular judge of the Supreme Court just said what? He's, John Marshall said. Quote. Our. Our Constitution declares a treaty to be the law. Of the land. It is consequently to be regarded in courts of justice as equivalent to an act of legislator. What does that mean? That the treaty. Is equivalent to just a regular statute. So the Affordable Care Act is permissible for anyone to invoke. And John Marshall said, the treaty language is equivalent to any statutory law. Meaning that all the citizens and nationals should be able to invoke. The language of a treaty just as well as they can invoke any other statute. That's what Supreme Court had said initially, they said that. Eighteen twenty-nine. But then fast forward, you're gonna learn, they're gonna say, well. They turn around and change their mind, listen, start from here, Chief Justice.
Chief Justice John Marshall explained. Our Constitution declares a treaty to be the law of the land. It is consequently to be regarded in courts of justice as equivalent to an act of the legislator. But Chief Justice Marshall then immediately qualified this explanation stating that a treaty is only the equivalent of a legislative act. When the treaty operates of itself without the aid of any legislative provision.
Pause, so. Chief Justice Marshall turned around and said, yeah, the language of the treaty is no different than any other statutory law that the Congress passes. Then he said, but, for once the United States ratifies the treaty. Did they turn around and then create additional legislation? That helps the treaty's language to go into full force and effect? No, so John Marshall, Supreme Court is doing interpretation, said, well, the United States has to say. If the treaty language is enforceable by the citizens. See, he contradicted himself. First, he said, yes, then he said, yeah, but. Yeah, but. So it created confusion, it created what? Ambiguity. Or whether a treaty is enforceable by the regular national or not. But which national? Foreign nationals. Who else is going to invoke a treaty if an American or American dispute, they ain't talking about treaties? But if it was a foreign national that gets caught up in the jurisdiction. Of the United States of America. Then that foreign national is trying to invoke the treaty. So the United States says, yeah, well, they come to treaty language, when these foreigners come over here. They're trying to invoke those treaties, should we allow them to be in, invoke it directly? Or do that foreigner? Need to go and get his government to come and invoke it for him? So it's back to state on state dispute, even if a national of a foreign state, say Canadian, Canada. And Canadians' nationals, the Canadian national has a problem with the United States. That Canadian national can't sue the United States of America, that Canadian national got to what? Talk to his Canadian state and the Canadian state will come in and sue the United States of America. But that Canadian national can't do it directly because it's a state on state dispute. So the United States started putting a pause on treaty language saying, yeah, who's the only person invoking these treaties? Foreign nationals, and guess what? Foreign nationals know more about treaty language in other countries because they teach foreigners about treaty enforcement. The United States don't like to teach citizens of the United States about treaties. Why is it the United States don't really teach their citizens about treaties? Because their citizens are gonna stumble across these Morris treaties. The United States don't want their citizens to find out about these Morris treaties. Can they be like, wait a minute, I read this, this, this treaty said these Moors run everything. They don't want, the, the United States don't want none of their citizens to know about these treaties, so they hide it. That's what's happening, listen. But let me just say this as a point, you go to Europe, guess what? The other European states, they talk about the Moors. They still have medallions and, and statues and all kinds of stuff with the Moors, especially Germany, Germany keeps a lot of stuff up about the Moors. They know about the Moors, they have annual celebrations and, and parties and parades about the Moors. Whether it's the conquest over the Moors. Right, when they're celebrating the conquest of the Moors, it doesn't matter, they still celebrate it, still talk about the Moors annually. The United States don't even like to say the word Moors, you know the word they love? Black. That's why they came up with Black History Month, ain't no such damn thing as Black History. You know what the history is? More, it's Moorish history. But they want to make sure they get in the psychology of a child early in elementary school and teach them about Martin Luther King. Black history. They get in that child's head and make that child think they black, as if that child never had no type of real history as being a Moor. You guys see what's happening, let's get back to point. Okay. Run the drain, let's pick it back up here, I, I gotta stay on point, I have a long class today.
Chief Justice John Marshall explained, our Constitution declares a treaty to be the law of the land. It is consequently to be regarded in courts of justice as equivalent to an act of the legislator. But Chief Justice Marshall then immediately qualified this explanation stating that a treaty is only the equivalent of a legislative act. When the treaty operates of itself without the aid of any legislative provision. When the terms of treaty import a contract or suggest that some future legislative act is necessary. Marshall explained, the treaty addresses itself to be, to the political, not the judicial department. And the legislator must execute the contract before it can become a rule for the court. Using this test, the Foster Court held that the treaty provision at issue. Which stated that certain land grants from the Kingdom of Spain shall be ratified and confirmed. Was non-self-executing because it suggested that Congress would ratify the land grants through a future legislative act. The Supreme Court revisited the self-execution doctrine in a two thousand eight decision.
Pause, okay, pay attention, Moors. Now, we're already talking about something that happened in two thousand eight. The Supreme Court now is making some decisions about how do you enforce treaties? But who's enforcing treaties? Foreigners. Then the foreigners go back and tell their state, yeah, man, the United States is, is picking on me. And then that foreign state comes and gets in the United States behind. So the Supreme Court is trying to figure out, okay, how do we protect the United States from getting a behind kick? By these foreigners who actually know international law. Let's see what happened in two thousand eight. Okay, from the top.
The Supreme Court revisited the self-execution doctrine in a two thousand eight decision.
Pause. You see what happened here? Moors must become wordsmiths. It says the Supreme Court revisited the self-execution doctrine. Oh, wait a minute. Why did it say the self-execution law? Is a doctrine a law? No, but what's my question? Listen. We went on to five facets of law. Does, is, is, does the doctrine fit in one of these categories? Potentially? Listen. A doctrine is not statutory law. Mean the House members didn't pass nothing? Soon you see the word doctrine. You immediately say, well, that's not statutory law because the House members didn't pass it. So it's not statutory law. Soon you see the word doctrine, you know it's not constitutional law because they're not getting the words from the Constitution. So you immediately cancel out Constitution, you immediately cancel out, cancel out statutory law. And you know it didn't come from international laws, they would have said, let's quote this international law, they didn't say that, did they? They said doctrine. So the only thing that could fall under at least five elements is what? Common law. So the judges, listen to me. The judges are creating this thing called doctrines. So it says what? Listen to who talked about it. Says what? The Supreme Court, see who's talking about doctrines? The Supreme Court revisited the self-execution doctrine. So who came up with the doctrine? The courts. Because it's not statutory, it's not fundamental law of Constitution, it's not international law, it's not treaty law. It's judge-made doctrines, you see? See how easy this is when you start, this is, this. This is why I was building the Moors up. Had to start with this first, I know it's a little confusing, but you'll get there. Doctrine, so for the record, so when you see doctrine, you automatically do what? You cancel out Constitution, it's not constitutional language, it's not statutory language, it's not legislative. It's not treaty, it's not international, it's common law because the judge has made up these rules. You see, now it becomes principles. That judges live by, the judges have their own principles under common law. They making their own laws and rules. That's not necessarily a bad thing because sometimes judges have to be a little flexible. Because sometimes there is no statute. Sometimes the judges have to come up with a ruling to settle a dispute that the legislators haven't wrote no law. In order to settle disputes, so the judge has no choice but to come up with some type of settlement. Basically, it was common on his common sense. So they put the common law to put the common sense in the hands of judges. To make the common sense decision in the absence of statutory law. Or in the absence of language in a constitution that was settled, or in the absence of language in the treaty. Or the absence of language in international law, you following me? Five facets of law. So which law rules? It's the rule of law, but which law rules us? If, if there's no law, these judges get to use these doctrines. That's why I'm building you up, be patient from the beginning.
Supreme Court revisited the self-execution doctrine in a two thousand eight decision, Medellin versus Texas. In that case, the United Nations' principal judicial body, the International Court of Justice. Had entered a judgment directing the United States to reconsider the criminal convictions and sentences of a group of Mexican nationals. The ICJ concluded that US state and local authorities that not, had not afforded the foreign nationals their rights. To communicate with Mexican consular nationals as required by the Vienna Convention of Consular Relations.
Communicate with who?
Communicate with Mexican consul officials. As required by the Vienna Convention on Consular Relations.
Pause. So who's enforcing the, the law? The Mexican consular officials are enforcing what? A treaty that would recognize an international law. So the Mexican officials, the, the consular officials, which is the common authority of Mexico. Was it the Mexican national doing it? No. Mexico was doing it. Just pause right here for a second, we'll get back to the reading, listen to me. You go over to the case, listen, in the International Court of Justice. The case called Avina and Other Mexican Nationals. Of the year two thousand three, it was a case of what? Mexico versus the United States of America. See, Mexico took the United States of America to the International Court of Justice. Regarding fifty-two, it started off at fifty-four, it'll be fifty-two Mexican nationals. That the state of Mexico came to represent its nationals. Why? Because the Mexican national got caught up in the jurisdiction of the United States and them Mexican nationals can't invoke treaties. They can't negotiate the interpretation of treaties by themselves. Who's the only person that can do it? The state and its state officials. And by the way, the United States of America got their butts headed to them. They lost on all counts, I think it was like eight counts, they lost on all of them. Because they're violating what? International law and treaties. Listen. So the Mexican consular officials were representing Mexico on behalf of Mexican nationals. But this is gonna be a slow twist. You'll see in just a moment, but what happened? From the top.
The Supreme Court revisited the self-execution doctrine in a two thousand eight decision, Medellin versus Texas. In that case, the United States, uh, United Nations' principal judicial body, the International Court of Justice. Had entered a judgment directing the United States to reconsider the criminal convictions and sentences of a group of Mexican nationals. The ICJ concluded that the US state and local authorities had not afforded the foreign nationals their rights to communicate with Mexican consul officials. As required by the Vienna Convention on Consular Relations. One of the foreign national, uh, one of the foreign nationals, Ernesto Medellin. Argued that the ICJ's judgment was directly enforceable in US courts because of a provision in another treaty. Article ninety-four of the Charter of the United Nations. That article provides that the United States and any member nation of the United Nations undertakes to comply. With the decision of the ICJ in any case to which it is a party. Uh, Medellin argued that Article ninety-four required Texas state authorities to reevaluate this conviction and stay. His upcoming, um, and stay his upcoming execution, but the Supreme Court disagreed. The court held that Article ninety-four, the. The court held that Article 94 of the Charter of the United Nations was not self-executing in part because Article 94 states that a party to the Charter undertakes to comply with ICJ decisions rather than stating that a country shall or must comply. Article 94 was not self-executing because it was not a directive directed to domestic courts and could not be judicially enforced in the face of contrary state law, the Supreme Court concluded.
Okay, pause. So in his case, as I showed you, eventually Mexico came in and got involved with the case to represent its officials, I mean its nationals. But that took place in 2003. See the year? That was the summary 2003. When Mexico took the United States of America to the ICJ and won. But wait a minute. Let's go back to this where we read. Why is the Supreme Court talking about something that happened? Supreme Court revisited the self-execution doctrine in 2008 decision? But wait, Mexico kicked the United States of America's butt in 2003, 2004? But the ICJ is looking at this in 2008 because they said somebody was trying to invoke the treaty language. Who was trying to invoke the treaty? It was who? This guy by the name Ernesto Medellin. So Ernesto Medellin was a Mexican national. He was still in jail. But wait, I thought the ICJ kicked the United States of America's butt in court? Then why wouldn't the fifty-two Mexican nationals released from prison and given back to Mexico? That's a question. I'm going to answer it. And number two, if Mexico as a state was already, the ICJ didn't own the United States of America as a state, then why is it now a Mexican national all by himself trying to go up against the United States and the state of Texas? If in fact his state had already done it for him? So getting back to the first question. Why did Mexico just get all their fifty-two nationals after they won the ICJ in 2003, 2004? Why didn't Mexico just back up a big school bus at the Rio Grande border and have the United States bring all fifty-two nationals and deport them onto the bus? Okay, let me tell you why. Watch this. Who was Ernesto Medellin? So right here, type. What was Ernesto Medellin charged with in Texas? Brother Drake?
September twenty-three, nineteen ninety-three, Medellin was charged for the gang rape and murder of two teenagers at Houston, Texas, September sixteenth, nineteen ninety-four. Medellin was found guilty for the murders of the teenagers October eleventh, nineteen ninety-four. Following a separate punishment hearing, Medellin was sentenced to death.
He was a hardened criminal. So fifty-two Mexican nationals were facing death sentences, for the most part, in several of the union states of the United States. Fifty-two of them in several different states. So this guy Ernesto is now fighting Texas and saying, "Texas, you gotta abide by the treaty language." And the ICJ told you, "You gotta do something about this citizen you're doing to me." But time out. Mexico had already done that. So why did Mexico back up a school bus and get all fifty-two of them onto the bus and keep on going to Rio Grande? Because Mexico didn't want rapers and killers back in Mexico. Now see, they ain't going to tell you these truths. How is it that Texas was able to move forward in the case of Medellin versus Texas and Texas was still able to execute this Mexican national if in fact Mexico had won the ICJ? Because even though Mexico won, Mexico just told the United States of America, "Look, you always won." But you hold on to them killers and rapers? Would you want to bring them back to Mexico so they can kill and rape in Mexico? I don't think so. So that wasn't going to make headline news. Mexico signs an agreement with the United States to let them keep all fifty-two Mexican nationals and sentence them to death. Even though Mexico won, if the ICJ, Mexico signed an agreement and let all those fifty-two nationals get the death chair. They wasn't going to say that out loud because the Mexican nationals in Mexico get mad at the Mexican government saying, "Why you let the United States keep our people? Why didn't you just put them on the bus and just put them in prison over here?" Mexico's like, "We didn't want them." But they're not going to say that out loud. So what happens? Listen to me. So now Medellin challenges Texas and now it becomes this big theatric show. Ernesto now, they make Ernesto's case by headline news for the United States. Oh, this Mexican's challenging Texas. Let's see if Texas can beat this Mexican national. But they already knew Ernesto, Ernesto, listen. They already knew Ernesto Medellin, Medellin could not enforce treaty language. He's not the state. So even though he challenged Texas, they was like, "Man, you're already lost. You don't even know it because we don't let anybody execute treaties." Your state gotta do that. And guess what? Your state already did it. And unfortunately, I hate to tell you, they left you over here with us. So Texas does all this big bad dance, "Yeah, we don't listen to the ICJ." Yeah, we don't have to abide by international law. And the whole time, they knew the United States punked out and wrote the check to Mexico. Mexico just turned a blind eye and kept it moving. And left them Mexican nationals in the hands of Texas and other states to be sentenced. And you got big bad Texas turn around, act like they did something real big. No, you didn't. You made a spectacle of this. And now the Supreme Court gets involved. Let's take a look at this ruling. The Supreme Court already knew the United States had already agreed to capitulate to give Mexico something in order to hold on to the Mexicans in order to sentence them. So the Supreme Court doing this song, this little tap dance for their citizens to make it look like the United States ain't got to listen to the ICJ, ain't got to listen to the Charter. That's BS. However, the Supreme Court was right about one thing. We're going to learn about it. The Supreme Court's going to say, "Well, these type of cases can't be brought in federal court." Why couldn't a case be brought in federal court? If the Mexican national had a problem with a treaty or whatever, why, let's take for instance, why couldn't Ernesto Medellin bring his case, his dispute to an actual federal court to talk about the treaty language? Number one, individuals can't enforce treaties. That's number one. Number two, what you're going to find out is this. Listen. You see what I got on the screen? This is called the Optional Protocol Concerning the Compulsory Suddenness of Disputes. Done on April twenty-fourth, nineteen sixty-three regarding what? Consular Notification Access. Which is the same thing Ernesto Medellin was arguing. He said, "I'm trying to enforce this treaty regarding the Vienna Convention on Consular Relations." Listen. The Mexican nationals trying to invoke the Vienna Convention on Consular Relations, he's trying to invoke the language. He couldn't do it by himself. Only Mexico could do it. That's number one. Number two, what the Supreme Court should've just told everybody? And the United States should've told everybody, "Why Mr. Ernesto Medellin could not enforce the treaties? Why?" Because the United States signed this optional protocol said the compulsory court is what? The ICJ. So if you want to invoke the Vienna Convention on Consular Relations, then the United States agreed that in any dispute, where the only place you can bring this treaty and argue the language of the treaty is only at the ICJ. Listen. Article one. Norma?
Article one. "Disputes arising out of the interpretation or application of the convention shall lie within the compulsory jurisdiction of the International Court of Justice and may accordingly be brought before the court by an application made by any party to the dispute being a party to the present protocol."
Read again.
Article one. "Disputes arising out of the interpretation or application of the convention shall lie within the compulsory jurisdiction of the International Court of Justice and may accordingly be brought before the court by an application made by any party to the dispute being a party to the present protocol."
Okay, so who's a party? Who's a party to the convention? Which is the Vienna Convention on Consular Relations. Who's party to it? Only the state. The United States of America was a party to the Vienna Convention on Consular Relations in which Ernesto Medellin was trying to enforce. But according to this optional protocol, it says the only court that can listen to your dispute was who? The International Court of Justice. So the Supreme Court justices of the United States said, the United States signed a treaty that says the federal courts can't deal with this dispute because the United States agreed to go to the ICJ with any dispute for the Vienna Convention on Consular Relations treaty. That's the United States of America agreed, which made the United States federal courts moot. The United States federal courts could not hear the legal arguments of the case for Ernesto Medellin. So Ernesto Medellin was stuck in the state of Texas to argue it because of federal justice. We ain't got nothing to do with it. The United States said, "If anybody got a problem with it, you gotta go to the ICJ." And guess who's the only people can argue cases with the ICJ? Only states. Not individuals. So Mr. Ernesto, listen, I'm building the moors up. Mr. Ernesto, he had already lost before he even got started. Because the treaty was non-self-executing, meaning he couldn't invoke the language. And then he couldn't even take it as an appeal to the federal courts. And Texas knew that he was stuck in Texas to deal with the case. And Texas knew he couldn't invoke a treaty. And Texas knew he couldn't go to the federal courts as an appeal. It was a one big theatric show in Texas. Why am I mentioning this? Because Moors Americans are doing the same thing. Ernesto Medellin is just like a Moors American. Trying to bring a suit against a state is Ernest, Ernest, it was Ernest Medellin versus Texas. It was a human being versus a damn state. Trying to invoke treaty language. And treaties are non-self-executing for individuals. Moors Americans are trying to invoke the treaty of peace and friendship as an individual and it's non-self-executing. And the several union states know that Moors Americans can't invoke it. They already know. More importantly, if a Moore has a problem with an American, their treaty of peace and friendship, Articles Twenty and Twenty-One says, "What's the proper venue? Consular court." So not only the Moors American, let's say his name is Ernesto Bay, he's plaintiff in error, he's plaintiff in error because he can't invoke any treaty language. Mr. Ernesto Bay can't invoke treaty language. And on top of that, the proper venue to go to is Consular Court. So are Moors Americans going to Consular Court with their problem? No. Why? Because the only person that can sit in a Consular Court is a Moroccan. The treaties recognize the word "Moors," but "Moors" is a short title for who? Moroccans. Noah Dry Lee tried to tell you, he said, "We," allegedly. He said, "We are descendants of Moroccans." Therefore, Moroccans sit on the bench of Consular Court. But Moors are running around calling themselves what? Americans. There ain't no damn such thing as American Consular Court. So all the Moors, Ernesto Bay is plaintiff in error because he can't enforce the treaty. And Ernesto Bay is plaintiff in error for improper venue because Ernesto Bay should be using Consular Court. But Ernesto Bay is still an American citizen, so he gotta use American lower courts because that's American on American dispute. You ain't no foreign national. Ernesto Medellin was a foreign national. He was recognized by Mexico. So Mexico went to the ICJ. Mexico said, "You know what? We're here to represent who? Ernesto Medellin. Avina and other Mexican nationals." Who's other Mexican nationals? Ernesto. Medellin was one of them. His state was representing him. But unfortunately, Mexico didn't want no rapers and killers back in Mexico. So they let the United States hold on to them. And this big theatric show happened in Texas. Big balloons and parades. Because they wanted to act like, "Yeah, we don't listen to the ICJ. We don't listen to the Charter." That's BS. They got their behinds kicked at the ICJ. Listen. Let's get back over here. We're building up. Taking our time, taking our time. Since it's been six weeks since we had an ad pack study session. Let's take our time, take our time. We're building up. Okay. Let's start right here. One.
One of the foreign nationals, Ernesto Medellin, argued that the ICJ's judgment was directly enforceable in US courts because of a provision in another treaty, Article ninety-four of the Charter of the United Nations. That article provides that the United States and any member nation of the United Nations undertakes to comply with the decision of the ICJ in any case to which it is a party. Medellin argued that Article ninety-four required Texas state authorities to reevaluate his conviction and stay his upcoming execution, but the Supreme Court disagreed. The court held that Article ninety-four of the Charter of the United Nations was not self-executing in part because Article ninety-four states that a party to the Charter undertakes to comply with ICJ's decisions rather than stating that a country shall or must comply. Article ninety-four was not self-executing because it was not a directive directed to domestic courts and could not be judicially enforced in the face of contrary state law, the Supreme Court concluded.
Continue. Who's a party to the United Nations Charter? Only states. So Ernesto Medellin was trying to enforce provisions of the Charter, but he's not a state and he's not a state representative. But he's trying to invoke Articles of the Charter of the United Nations. Who's that sound like? Moors Americans. Trying to invoke treaty language, trying to invoke charter language, trying to invoke language of the rice and indigenous people. You can't invoke Articles of the Rice Indigenous People because first your state must become a party to that treaty. Then you might be able to enforce Articles of the Rice Indigenous People if your state points out certain provisions and the Rice Indigenous People say, "Yeah." Let's see here. There's forty-six Articles. And the Rice Indigenous People, and we're going to say Articles one, five, fifteen, and twenty are, give you the right to self-execute. We're going to pick out five Articles out of forty-six. That's what your state would do. But individuals just can't enforce all forty-six Articles of the Rice Indigenous People? Who's the only person that can enforce all forty-six Articles of Rice Indigenous People? Only the state. And then sometimes they'll give their own citizens a right to invoke one or two of the Articles of said treaty. This is what Moors never understood. Never understood. Let's continue. Let's get through this.
Determining whether a treaty provision is self-executing is not always a straightforward task. In some cases, a treaty may specify whether it is intended to be a treaty may specify whether it is intended to be given immediate domestic legal effect without further action. However, the Medellin Court disapproved of the notion that certain special words or phrases are necessary to make a treaty self-executing. Medellin also rejected a multi-factor analysis advanced by three justices in a dissent which would look outside the treaty's text and analyze a variety of practical context-specific, uh, criteria to determine self-execution. Instead, the Medellin Court explained that the primary question is whether the president and senate intended the treaty to be self-executing. The Supreme Court has deemed a treaty non-self-executing when the text manifested in intent that the treaty would not be directly enforceable in US courts.
Pause. Read that again, the Supreme Court, what did the Supreme Court say?
The Supreme Court has deemed a treaty non-self-executing when the text manifested in intent that the treaty would not be directly enforceable in US courts.
Why couldn't the treaty be enforceable in the US courts? More specifically, the Vienna Convention on Constitution Relations because this is what Ernesto Medellin was trying to enforce. So even if Ernesto Medellin could enforce the treaty, the treaty language itself said what? Okay, let's go back to it. It said, under Article one of what? The optional protocol concerning what? Concerning the compulsory settlement of the dispute. What does compulsory mean? That means the ICJ ended up becoming by default the proper venue in order to argue the provisions of said treaty. So since the United States signed this optional protocol, the United States deferred to the ICJ to argue all disputes regarding the Vienna Convention. Which mean the US courts couldn't hear any of the language regarding the Vienna Convention. Because the United States agreed. It would always go to the ICJ to dispute it. And not in the federal court. You gotta understand what I'm saying. Let's read Article one again, this is law. Moors got scut.
Article one. Disputes arising out of the interpretation or application of the convention shall lie within the compulsory jurisdiction of the International Court of Justice.
Pause, read again.
Article one. Disputes arising out of the interpretation or application of the convention shall lie within the compulsory jurisdiction of the International Court of Justice.
So what's the proper venue to argue over the provisions of the Vienna Convention on Constitution Relations? Only the ICJ. That's the United States agreed to. So Ernesto Medellin, he didn't even know that. But guess who did know? Mexico. That's why they took the United States of America to ICJ. That was the proper venue. So Ernesto Medellin was already plaintiff in what? Error. Because he can't self-execute the treaty. And then it was improper venue. He had already lost day one. But he's sitting there fighting and no one's telling him, "Bro, you lost before you started." You don't understand what? The rule of law. What law rules? And according to the Vienna Convention on Law Treaties, what law rules? If two states agree to say that ICJ is the compulsory proper venue, then that's the only venue where you can go and argue the dispute. Stuff is easy. But guess what you gotta do first? Read. But if don't nobody tell you to read it, you'll never read it. I guarantee you, Moors Americans have never read what I'm reading out loud to you. But they run around talking about enforce the Constitution. Enforce the treaty of peace and friendship. Enforce counsel relations. You got Moors running around talking about they're the counsel general of Morocco. Moors are running around saying they're the counsel general of Morocco and they're Moors Americans. Trying to invoke the language of a treaty that they cannot invoke. Then on top of that, if they're gonna try to bring a dispute against the United States of America, what court do they have to go to? If in fact their state of the Moors Americans, in which there is no state called Moors America. But if there was a state called Moors America, then more than likely, they would have also signed this optional protocol to say, the only court you can go to dispute this if you got a problem with Constitution Relations is the ICJ. But what's the problem with Moors Americans? Ain't they stateless if they're saying they're not citizens? But the reality, if they are citizens, naturalized, they're just simply Americans. Fighting with other Americans, therefore it's a domestic case and not a foreign case. They, they've been miseducated. I feel sorry for Moors Americans. I used to be one. I got miseducated. I had, I had to shake it off. I had to loose me. That's what I said, it's loose me, this BS that's being taught to our people. The Moors American movement, nothing but a commercial enterprise. Just selling packages and Moors are going to jail by the day, just like Ernesto Medellin. He went to jail and then he was sentenced to death. Thinking he could enforce a treaty. And he couldn't. He didn't understand what? The rule of law. And neither do Moors Americans. I love them, but they know not what they do. Listen, I'm building up. Continue.
Many courts and commentators agree that treaty provisions that would require the United States to exercise authority that the Constitution assigns to Congress exclusively must be deemed non-self-executing. Although the Supreme Court has not addressed these constitutional limitations, lower courts have concluded that because Congress controls the power of the purse, a treaty provision that requires, uh, expenditure of funds must be treated as non-self-executing. Other lower courts have suggested that the treaty provisions that report to create criminal liability or raise revenue must be non-self-executing because those powers are the exclusive prerogative of Congress. The doctrine of non-self-execution appears to be in some tension with the supremacy clause declaration that all treaties are a part of the supreme law of the land. The Supreme Court has never fully explained the relationship between non-self-executing treaties and the supremacy clause. Opinions from some lower courts and the Office of Legal Counsel in the Department of Justice suggest non-self-executing treaties lack any domestic legal status. However, other courts and scholars contend that although non-self-executing treaties may not be enforced in courts, they may still form part of the supreme law of the land that is carried out and enforced outside the judicial system.
Pause, so supreme law. See, the judges know that the supreme law, the supreme law of the land is carried out and what? It is enforced outside the judicial system of the United States. See, outside the United States, they enforce the what? The rule of law. They don't play all these games, these Mickey Mouse games. So you gotta go to what? A competent court that will enforce the actual rule of law. What's a competent court? Okay, the ICJ. This is why the United States gets their butts kicked every time they go to the ICJ. They have a losing record. What's another competent court? The ICC, the International Criminal Court. What's another competent court? It's called the MCC. The Moors Confident Counsel Court, the Moors Counsel Court. MCC. The MCC will enforce the rule of law. Why? Because that's the compulsory court in any dispute between who? Americans and Moroccans. So when Moroccans and Americans have a dispute, the United States signed a bilateral treaty called what? Treaty of Peace and Friendship, Articles twenty and twenty-one says, in any dispute, what's the compulsory court you go to? Counselor court. Between who? Moroccans and Americans or between Americans and Moroccans? Therefore, the federal courts of the United States cannot hear any disputes that happen between Moroccans and Americans. Because the United States has signed a contract that did what? It silenced its federal courts. Because the Treaty of Peace and Friendship says the compulsory proper venue is Counselor Court. It silences the federal courts and it silences the lower courts. The lower courts of the United States and the several union states and of the federal government's courts can't hear any cases regarding disputes between Moroccans and Americans. Now, if the Supreme Court knew that about Ernesto Medellin, because the Supreme Court said, yeah, Mr. Ernesto can't bring that case because the United States said, the only way you can argue the dispute of the Vienna Convention on Constitution Relations, you gotta go to the ICJ. That's what the contract said. Okay. Is the Supreme Court of the United States gonna read the Treaty of Peace and Friendship and tell that to the United States federal government? Who's trying to prosecute Moroccans? Is the Supreme Court of the United States under that judicial review and decision gonna tell the lower courts of the several union states? Yeah, you can't hear none of the legal arguments between Moroccans and Americans because the United States has signed a treaty that says the proper venue is Counselor Court. You see? So therefore, the treaty language now was ratified because of the state constitution, United States of America supremacy clause. The treaty was then sent over to the Congress and it was ratified, Treaty of Peace and Friendship of seventeen eighty-seven. And the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of eighteen thirty-six were both ratified through the Congress of the United States. And then signed by the President into law, giving it the full weight of state. Therefore, the Treaty of Peace and Friendship becomes binding on the United States of America and of the United States federal government. And of the several union states. And none of the judges in the lower courts or the federal courts can hear any of the legal arguments regarding the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. But Moors have been trying to use the Treaty of Peace and Friendship in the lower courts and federal courts. Wrong venue. And you're a plaintiff in error because your behind is still a naturalized American. It's an American on American dispute, it's domestic. It's not foreign, it's not national, it's not international. You're not a separate national of the United States of America. You're still naturalized on the United States of America's jurisdiction as an American. And this is why Moors Americans ain't woke up to realize, where's the state that came to represent me when I got caught up in court? Like Ernesto Medellin, Mexico came to represent the Mexican nationals. And Moors Americans haven't figured it out yet. Ain't no damn state came to have your back yet in a hundred years. One hundred years. No state representation. Because Moors Americans keep saying they're not a citizen of the United States, so they saying they over here, right? Now where's your state to have your back? This is you, where's your state? The state don't exist because ain't no such thing as Moors Americans. It's a fiction. Now I know Moors are sensitive. But I tell all these master teachers, set up the panel. Challenge me. They won't do it now. I will expose all these so-called master teachers that call themselves Moors Americans. I will absolutely destroy them. I will crush them when it comes to the what? The rule of law. Hell, they can't even find the word Moors American in the dictionary. Don't play with me. Let's continue.
Last, last paragraph. Despite the importance of the self-execution doctrine in US domestic law, self-execution does not impact treaty status under international law. Under international law, treaties create rights and obligations that nations owe to one another that are independent of each, uh, independent of each nation's domestic law.
Pause, read again from the top.
Despite the importance of the self-execution doctrine in US domestic law, self-execution does not impact treaty status under international law. Under international law, treaties create rights and obligations that nations owe to one another that are independent of each nation's domestic law.
So who owes the observation and application of the treaty language? It's state on state. The states owe it to each other. However, should states extend certain rights to its nationals to allow its nationals to enforce certain provisions of a treaty? Let's say it's got twenty-five Articles. The state should allow its nationals to be invoked the provision that talks about human rights. Okay, let's go to the Empire of Morocco's Constitution. Follow me. Here's the Constitution for the Empire of Morocco. Now, the first thing you must understand that his majesty's Sultan, Abdul Al Qabir, signed this Constitution into law. But this Constitution also has a supremacy clause. Which article is the supremacy clause of the Constitution of the Empire of Morocco? It's Article sixty-five. Let's go to it.
Article sixty-five. Treaties are international agreements. Duly ratified shall prevail over acts of the House upon publication. All treaties made or which shall be made under the authority of the Empire of Morocco shall be the supreme law of the land. The judges of the empire and the internal states shall be bound thereby. Anything in the Constitution or laws of any Moors state to the contrary notwithstanding.
So the Empire of Morocco's Constitution, the master contract, also recognizes treaty language as being the supreme law of the land. So it comes under what? Fundamental law. So all Moroccans of the Empire of Morocco can enforce fundamental law to say treaties are enforceable. But not every provision of a treaty should a Moroccan national be able to enforce because some of the Articles of a treaty ain't got nothing to do with the national. It's a state-on-state type Articles that's going on. However, remember what I said. In a treaty, there might be a provision in the treaty that's a human right provision, i.e. a human right article. So the state in Morocco, the state has then identified that particular Article and say it's self-executing. Self-executing. That particular Article is self-executing in the treaty. So in the fundamental laws of the Constitution, it also talks about in the Constitution that his majesty's Sultan has given the Moors a human right to invoke certain Articles in the treaties. Listen. Now we go down to Article ninety-seven. This is Article ninety-seven of the Constitution of the Empire of Morocco that has two subsections. The first subsection is gonna tell you, these Moors who have failed to pledge their allegiance to the Empire of Morocco shall remain under the jurisdiction of a foreign country because those Moors haven't followed the instructions. Paragraph two is gonna tell the Moors, you have a right to invoke the treaty language if in fact you wanna choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire. And what is the law of the empire? The Constitution. That's the master contract. That's the first paramount law. So Article ninety-seven, brother.
So, Article ninety-seven. Any subject of Morocco who cannot prove ordinary Moroccan nationality per the civil status of the Empire of Morocco or by identification from an internal Moroccan state, the sole status referred to in Article thirty-six shall retain naturalized personal status in a foreign country by consent or acquiescence only until they have renounced the naturalized status by application.
Read it again.
Article ninety-seven. Any subject- Article ninety-seven, any subject of Morocco who cannot prove ordinary Moroccan nationality per the civil status of the Empire of Morocco or by identification from an internal Moroccan state, the sole status referred to in Article thirty-six shall retain naturalized personal status in a foreign country by consent or acquiescence only until they have renounced the naturalized status by application.
So the Constitution of the Empire of Morocco supports the treaty language of the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, paragraph two. And paragraph two, which we will read soon, said that any Moors are still naturalized, still come under civil and criminal jurisdiction of the United States and other several Union States without any restrictions. So since the Sultan signed that back in eighteen eighty, the Sultan as of today and contemporary times under intertemporal law, we got a new Sultan now. Abdul Al Khabir had to also agree to maintain the treaty language. Listen, now we go to part two. Listen to what the Sultan did for the Moors.
His Majesty reaffirms that Moors subjects and proteges have the preemptory right on a fixed and uniform basis to return to the jurisdiction of Morocco and choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire and consent by application to the Moroccan government per Article fifteen, paragraph one of the Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty without assent from any foreign country or organ.
Read it again.
His Majesty reaffirms that Moors subjects and proteges have the preemptory right on a fixed and uniform basis to return to the jurisdiction of Morocco and choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire and consent by application to the Moroccan government per Article fifteen, paragraph one of the Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty without assent from any foreign country or organ.
All right, so what does this mean? That even in the Empire of Morocco's Constitution, which is fundamental law, which is permissible to be enforced, the Sultan of Morocco has given the Moors a treaty right to enforce a particular article of the treaty. So now Article fifteen, paragraphs one and two are enforceable to be self-executing by any Moors subject or protege. So when a Moors subject or protege is getting caught up in the United States, they're trying to tell the United States, look, I, I got a right to return to Morocco. Guess what? That Moors subject got a right to tell the United States that. If in fact they have started the due process of what? The application. See the application? If the Moor hasn't started that application process and if that application has not been accepted by Morocco, then the Moors, the Moors subject ain't got nothing coming. You go back to what? You go back to Article ninety-seven, paragraph one, you still stuck in there jurisdiction. Until your application is approved, then you come under jurisdiction of the Empire of Morocco because you utilized Article fifteen, paragraph one of the Madrid Convention. The Madrid Convention is a treaty. So the United States is telling you, oh, you Moors can't enforce a treaty. But the Empire of Morocco said, yes, you can. Why? Because the state says you can. You see? So Moors gotta understand, as I start to close out, because I'm, I'm building up, next class, we're gonna keep moving forward, we're gonna get to that Resolution fifteen fourteen in the next class, but first we building up. How are you gonna enforce a treaty when A, you're stateless because you haven't done us, the Empire of Morocco hasn't recognized you? Under paragraph two, Article ninety-seven. Has the Empire of Morocco recognized you? Has His Majesty's Sultan and the Empire of Morocco recognize you as Moroccan? Answer, yes or no? It's just that simple. If the answer is no, you fall under paragraph one of Article ninety-seven. If the answer is yes, because you're going through due process or you've already been approved to be recognized as Moroccan, now you come under the Constitution power of fundamental law to be protected under state and you get to invoke treaty language, it's self-executing. And treaties come under the protection of what? International law, under subject matter of what? The rule of law. So what's the rule of law? What law rules? The Empire of Morocco's laws rule. Because the Empire of Morocco's laws allow Moors subjects to return to Morocco and allow Moors subjects to be enforced self-executing provisions of the Treaty of Madrid. And guess who confirms it? Not only is the Constitution and the Moors government confirming, guess what the courts do? The courts sign off on your application that validates that you're a Moroccan national. So the courts approve, the statutory law of the state has already ratified the treaty, the Constitution recognized the treaty, and the judges recognized the treaty language that signed off on your application and say, yes, the state validated that you are Moroccan. So it's very important, Moors starting to understand, next class, we'll keep going through this, we'll keep building up to understand how to enforce Resolution fifteen fourteen, which is a decolonization treaty, but you can't enforce treaties unless you have a state because of state on state relations, only state can be a party to a treaty in order to enforce said treaty. Then the state gotta turn around and give nationals agreements and arrangements to be able to enforce certain articles of the treaty. Moors don't know nothing about this stuff. It's right there in black and white. But we gotta study, study, study. I owe that, it's law.